Okay, so I have absolutely no one joining me live, not a shock. I should probably not say I'm gonna record it for later, but I want to be fair and those with working hours who can't make it can access this. Again, this is all material that we've covered before. So for many of you, it might be very redundant. I'm gonna go through very quickly since there's not, there's no one here and I don't have questions. And just go through some of the things you should pay attention to for the exam. So, Chapter 7, the President. Most of this just read through quickly, but 22nd Amendment. Know what that is, limiting the President to two terms or 10 years, and that was created after FDR was President, Truman was President at this time. He became President in 1945 when FDR passed away, just after he was starting his fourth term. So, know what that is. Know the process for impeachment. Know the difference between it has, you know impeachment, one can be impeached in the House, you just need a simple majority, 50%. But then it has to go to the Senate where you have two thirds, a super majority, and that's why it's never happened. There's never been a conviction in the Senate of an impeachment in our history. 25th Amendment, that's one to pay attention to, that's in 1967. And this was after, notice there's always contextual reasons for these things. This is after the Kennedy assassination. You had Lyndon B. Johnson become President, and they wanted to make sure that there is a process in place for continuing administrative power. So you have the new President. Must name a Vice President, was that approved by a majority of both the House and Senate? And it also has, which we heard this conversation in the last administration, some conspiracy theories regarding this. Allows the Vice President, the majority of the Cabinet to deem if the President is unfit to carry out his or her duties. Now, this could be in the case where a President is incapacitated, as we saw with Woodrow Wilson. And we saw this with some other Presidents who were undergoing surgery over the years, or it could be where the President has lost their marbles. As you know, President has the appointment power, it's ambassadors, judges, Cabinet members, executive branch positions, they may appoint as many as 3,500 federal employees. Only about 1,200 require Senate confirmation, though that's not only, that's a lot of confirmations we discussed before. The power to convene Congress, power to make treaties, though these different powers, veto power. Can override a bill that's passed the House and Senate. However, you will lead, this Congress can come back with a super majority to overturn a veto, which is two thirds, which is, which is tough. And almost never happens. Last time it happened was in the 73. I want to say it's in here, and that was with Nixon. And this was the War Powers Act. To control presidential power. So pardoning power, saw a lot of that recently. And Commander in Chief, War Powers Act, here it is 1973. So this was actually vetoed by Nixon, and then Congress came back in a bipartisan way to pass the bill, which is very rare. Know George Washington, our first constitutional President. He helped establish the primacy of the national government. He put down the Whiskey Rebellion in four states. And he led the troops himself. He established the Cabinet system, there was not a Cabinet system in the new Constitution, though it did lay out the groundwork for an executive branch, so it did have the structure for that. John Adams came in after he was part of the split into the Federalists, which are Adams and the Democratic Republicans, or the Anti-Federalists, which were Jefferson and Madison. He had the Sedition Act, don't forget about that, that was very unpopular and probably was a big reason the new Democratic Republicans won in a landslide, not only President, but in the in the different, in the different congressional races. If you remember, we talked about Adams administration, the Federalists filled the courts with as many people as they could. Just prior to Jefferson taking office, at that time, he didn't, the President didn't take office in January, it was in March. That created a lot of drama. Thomas Jefferson, the third President. Doubled the size of the nation with the Louisiana Purchase. Instead of the most qualified Cabinet members, which Washington had done, if you remember, George Washington wanted Cabinet members who would speak from a range and diverse points of view, so he would want people from opposing ideologies to be part of the Cabinet, so that he would have a wide range of viewpoints and perspectives. And Adams, not, you know, obviously became more partisan with Adams and is filling a more Federalist-minded people, and then Jefferson continued that trend. So the President, the Executive Orders Memorandums of Proclamations, review that. They do not require congressional approval, as we talked about, but Congress can propose a bill to remove the executive order. Also, an executive order could be deemed unconstitutional by the courts, federal courts. Vice President, we've seen a lot of change there, used to be second place in election, that was problematic. A change in 1804 with the 12th Amendment, and it became where the party or the candidate would choose their running mate, rather than have their rival be Vice President, have a big incentive to have the President do poorly, or even perish. Vice President presides over the Senate, only votes, in the case of a tiebreaker, we've seen that here and there. Is a member of National Security Council, can be very powerful or very irrelevant, depending on the President. For example, in George W. Bush's presidency, you had a very strong Vice President in Dick Cheney. And all of the intel, intelligence information, and his daily brief would go through the Vice President's office first. Also, the terrorist task force all went through the Vice President's office before reached the President. So in that case, this is a very strong Vice President with a lot of control. Ironically, an example where that wasn't the case was George H.W. Bush, the father of George W. Bush. He had a weak Vice President. And George H.W. Bush actually served as a very strong Vice President under Ronald Reagan. Having similar powers to Cheney in his son's administration. The Cabinet is 15 members plus the Vice President, plus some other people depending on the President. It's implied, but not directly mentioned in the Constitution. As we know, Secretary heads each executive department, the only exception is the Attorney General, or the Department of Justice. And a Director, the title is for heading an agency. And agencies can be under departments for the most part, but there are independent agencies, we'll discuss that later, as you, as we did already. Presidential spouses. Know some of these names. Executive Office of the President was established by FDR, when you have the New Deal programs coming into effect, so lots of federal government action put in place during the 30s to combat the Great Depression. And the Executive Office of the President came about near the end of the 30s. That includes Council of Economic Advisers, Office of Management and Budget, Office of the Vice President, Office of U.S. Trade Representatives, many different agencies. National Security Council, you have a National Security Advisor, which includes, and the Council includes a President, Vice President, Secretaries of State, Treasury and Defense, those are mandated in law. And the Chair of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, however, oftentimes many other Directors of Agencies may participate, generally CIA. You could have FBI, you could have Department of Homeland Security, obviously, and many other groups. White House Staff, usually the Chief of Staff, and then many, many aides. The Bully Pulpit, know what that is, what it means, that was FDR, actually, his uncle Teddy Roosevelt was the first to coin that phrase, but FDR used it. And that's, the President has a, has a platform to address the people, you know, usually through media at the time, radio, or now television, internet, etc. People listen to the President, what the President says is reported, so that's considered a bully pulpit, like a church pulpit where someone preaches. And they can use that to influence the public, that will influence Congress to take action in certain agenda items. Okay, Office of Management and Budget, used to be Bureau of the Budget. And that works exclusively for the President, it's just hundreds of economic budget experts, advisors, etc. And their counterpart in Congress, we talked about, was the Congressional Budget Office. So OMB will put together the budget, it'll be reviewed by CBO, Congressional Budget Office. Just to have a check, used to be just the Office of Management of Budget, or just the Bureau of the Budget, and then Congress said, no, we need some way of checking, making sure these, we agree with these forecasts and confirmations. Okay, executive branch of federal bureaucracy, this was created with the Constitution, originally, as we said, there's only three departments. Foreign Affairs, War and Treasury. These became Department of State, Department of Defense, and of course, Department of Treasury. Later, you see, usually departments added after some large event or change in the paradigm. In this case, Civil War helped create a few. You have Department of Agriculture, that was to feed the troops originally, the pension office. That was created for former Union soldiers, that was, was part of the executive branch, not a department at the time. Now you have Department of Veteran Affairs, which is later, but similar concept. And Department of Justice, and that was created because of all of the litigations after the Civil War. To be a more efficient way of handling that. We talked about the patronage system, the spoil system, it's associated with Andrew Jackson, of course. It went back further, but Andrew Jackson came in, or remember, we talked about populism, we saw the video, know about that. Pendleton Act, it's just a major change in how civil service jobs, government jobs reviewed at the federal level, and this was saying that there needs to be competitive exams and have skilled, qualified people taking federal jobs. And so that came into being in 1883, this is after, if you remember, President Garfield was shot for not giving someone a job. Felt they were owed it. And this was championed by the later President Woodrow Wilson. Who actually turned out to be a pretty racist, bigoted guy, and did a lot of awful things while President in in segregating the federal workforce. So again, there's some positive with being professionalism, but then terrible negative with Woodrow Wilson with his embracing of segregation in the civil workforce, federal government. Progressive movement, don't confuse it with the modern progressive movement, this is in the 19th century. And it was against monopolies, especially associated with the railroads, inefficiency, inefficient government. They were against the spoil system, corruption that that brought. Again, look at contextual reasons, you had Industrial Revolution, railroads, Western expansion during this time. Parts of the progressive movement, Interstate Commerce Commission, that was created to regulate railroads, Federal Trade Commission was created to protect small businesses. And Department of Commerce and Labor split in 1913, which made sense, since there could be a conflict of interest for what Commerce wants and what Labor wants. You saw pushes for more rights for labor, breaking up monopolies, using scientific method. 16th Amendment, know this one, this is what created our beloved income tax system. But when we created that, we created a new income stream for the federal government. This was created through the influence of major bankers. At the time, we met in Jekyll Island to discuss this, and how we can create a new federal central bank to the United States. FDR, Franklin Roosevelt, New Deal programs, we talked a lot about that. Depression, World War II, that created a massive explosion of growth in this country in post-World War II. Much of this was helped through World War II Veterans Benefits, the GI Bill, which allowed veterans to go to college, buy a house, you had different farming bills during the 30s that allowed land ownership for more different and diverse groups of people. Of course, these, there's still a lot of racism in the implementation of these laws. But they brought a large chunk of the United States into the middle class, you also had FDR's support of unions, which raised wages in the 30s and 40s for laborers, which massively helped create the middle class. And also, you combine that with the Eisenhower interstate system, post-World War II in the 50s, and you see this explosion of suburbia, all of these different suburban areas and the American dream of owning your house with your lawn and your white picket fence and two cars in the garage and all that stuff. LBJ's Great Society. This was based on JFK's principles, civil rights, Medicare, Medicaid were created. And this brought millions of people out of poverty through providing healthcare to the elderly and to the poor. You have the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, this was created after the Civil Rights Bill to ensure protections. Know the different Cabinet Departments, I'm not gonna go through each one. They go from oldest to newest. Know the different types of federal agencies, so you have, of course, Cabinet Departments, and then you have government corporations. You have agencies themselves under the Departments. Government corporations are like Amtrak, FDIC, the Postal Service, they're designed to pay for themselves. Independent Executive Agency, they need to be separate from politics, like EPA, the SS CIA. Independent Regulatory Commission, these are set up specifically for some industry, the FCC Communications, SEC, Security and Exchange Commission. For the Stock Exchange of Banking. High turnover, key positions, see what balance we should focus on. This is important, accountability within the executive branch, this also is, are the checks and balances, President, what they can do. Congress and judiciary, I'm not gonna read through all that, but look at that. The judiciary, know the difference between original jurisdiction and appellate jurisdiction. Original jurisdiction, they're acting as a trial court, appellate jurisdiction, they are reviewing cases from a lower court or trial court. The Judiciary Act of 1789, around the time of the Constitution being implemented, created the current court system we have now. Federal District Courts, they hear cases, circuit courts, and we call them Courts of Appeals now. Review District Court cases only, and the Supreme Court. That was originally six members, went up and down, up to 11, now is that nine? Wasn't taken seriously originally. John Marshall helped change that. Know these, Marbury v. Madison, generally what it, what these meant. So review these. Know definitely the jurisdiction of federal district courts. So, is the federal government a party in the case, federal question, jurisdiction. Constitutional claim treaty with another nation. Regarding a federal statute, etc., civil suits for citizens from different states in amount greater than 75,000. Know the difference between the courts with the judges who are appointed. But they get a lifetime appointment, they're not, they can't be removed by the President, they can only be impeached by Congress for feeling to maintain good behavior. U.S. Attorneys, however, can be fired by the President, we usually see that happen. Trump fired all 94. 46 were Obama appointees. Obama obviously didn't fire all when he came in. But fired a good few. So circuit courts are Courts of Appeals, just know those are basics. No, there's no original jurisdiction, so you can't have a Court of Appeals trying a case. Know it's senatorial courtesy, just review that, confirmation process. Review that, Supreme Court. Know where cases are coming from. And know what precedent means, we talked about that a lot. Sorry, decisism. The rule of four, Richard cert. Review those. These, this is important, your case is more likely to be heard by the Supreme Court. Know what Solicitor General is. That's the fourth ranking Department of Justice, they're appointed by the President, they're basically the prosecutor outside of outside of the Attorney General themselves. But half the cases have the Solicitor General as a party, they're representing the federal government, or as a friend of the court, you know, they have their opinion either way. Reefs. Oral arguments are just 30 minutes. Each party. The conference of voting, know some of the basics there. Writing opinions, formal opinion of the court, is the official opinion of the court, is written by generally just one justice, representing the majority. A dissenting opinion will be written, usually, it could be just one justice, or it could be a few. Dissenting opinions, concurring opinion, they agree with the formal opinion, but they add nuances, you know, maybe they came to that decision for a different reason. Judicial restraint. Versus judicial activism, judicial activism says that judges should use their power widely to interpret and influence the law in a manner to create the best justice, whereas judicial restraint says judges should allow the decisions of other government branches to stand, even if they don't agree with it. Especially, you know, if these other governments are closer to being elected by the people, so that the ideology there is that they're more representative of the people. Of course, that's not always true, because each area is different. A strict constructionism or originalism, is a lot of the conservative justices now are subscribe to at least a bit of this, and you don't apply a spirit of a law, you look at strictly what it says, and in the context of the Framers era, which makes it problematic, as if there was slavery, patriarchy, elitism, etc. They don't like the living, breathing Constitution concept. Often doesn't value modern context. So Chapter 11, political parties. Initially were meant to be temporary. Weren't put into the Constitution, despite how much power they have over the system right now, the two major parties. Thomas Jefferson thought that they would be gone, and just be an election type of thing, or said it didn't happen. Jacksonian democracy, we talked a lot about that, the populism, the spoil system. Whigs and Democrats were the first two-party system in the Western world. And now we still have the longest-running two-party system in, in the world with two major parties. Know the Gilded Age, the progressive era, we talked about. The context is you have massive immigration from Europe, mainly from Catholic, predominantly Catholic areas, Ireland and Southern Europe and Eastern Europe, Italy, Poland, etc. And they're coming to work in the factories. You have, through that, growth of these immigrant groups, these political machines that start popping up in large cities, we talked about that, we went over Boss Tweed. And these, some of these immigrant groups used these political machines to, to move up the social ladder, so upward mobility. Progressive era changes, government took over numerous functions of elections, of response to some of these political machines. Milfevens, Milfezens, party machines, they lost power through anti-corruption efforts, though they still survived in many ways, well into the late 20th century. But in general, they wanted professionalism in civil service to replace a spoil system, which did a lot of good, over there's still issues of, of spoil system. In the mid 20th century, we saw a bit of a movement away from the party system after World War II, with the suburbs, people moving out from cities into the suburbs, and you saw more, it was based on the candidate character, and you saw the growth of independent voters who wouldn't stick to one party over the other, they fluctuate between the two. And that was generally the case until it started getting more, far more partisan over the last 30 years. And a lot of that split over the last 30 years was due to the Southern Strategy of the Republican Party, as well as the linking of faith, especially evangelical churches to the Republican Party. And wedge issues like abortion, women's rights, LGBTQ, gun rights, things of that nature. So know just the basics about the Democratic Republican National Party structure. Two thirds of the winning parties' platform tends to be enacted, one half of the losing's platform tends to be enacted, it's kind of interesting. See what else, know the breakdown, the precincts, like how many precincts there would be, just to get, so, you know, contextually, you understand. In this case, about 100,000 precincts, that's the smallest voting unit. And the party building activities, or boat, get out the boat, drive, things like that, there's unlimited funding allowed for that. It's state local parties, so they can spend whatever. And gerrymandering, we talked a lot about that, we saw some video. And that's still very prevalent, though there's some small movements to lessen the impact of gerrymandering. So just review the demographics, we just talked about the minor parties, if it influenced the Dixiecrats, or just at one election, but called later more an informal term for Southern Democrats. You had that split starting, and eventually then went to support George Wallace, and then went ultimately to the Republican Party, because they, these groups of Because they, these groups of politicians were against civil rights and uh. Pro-segregation, they were against desegregation efforts. Uh, Green Party. So winner take all system. It's generally what the way we use, is the way we have uh, our election set up, it's not proportional. So that is a barrier to minor party success, so if a minor party gets ten percent of the votes in a national election, they're not going to get ten percent of Congress. Unless they won any space or ten percent of the actual. Races, which wouldn't be the case. Obviously, no dark money and the five oh one four C fours, which we just discussed in the last lecture. Know the difference between closed primaries and open primaries. Know what a runoff primary is, jungle primary, like we have here. The difference with the initiative referendum and recall. Some of the changes we see now that most states thirty-eight run a primary, only twelve use a caucus, used to be uh, mostly caucus. Electoral College, understand what that's about. The advantages for an incumbent. And why they will lose occasionally. Or win. Some of the campaign staff, just understand the basic differences of what. Basic team might consist of, what horse race coverage is. And then know these, uh, here, you have the Tillman Act, Federal Election Campaign Act. Bipartisan campaign reform, or the king find gold. And then of course, Citizens United, we've talked a lot about, just understand the basics of that, McCutcheon B, F E C. Which strengthened the ruling in Citizens United. And made the. You know, controlling contribution limits, violation of the Free Speech Clause. Unfortunately. Know these basics, what individuals can give, this is just to the candidates' individual accounts, not to. Different super funds and super PACs that. Uh, are promoting electioneering around elections, and it's unlimited. So know these basics here. Presidential funds, the public amount, which now isn't accepted, because it's not enough. It is accepted in some cases, but. Less so lately. Obviously liberals, conservatives, you know the difference. At some of these basics, demographic information. Senior citizens are far more likely to vote, women vote at a higher rate than men, young people are far less likely to vote. Et cetera. And that is it. So if you have any questions, just email me, and then you have tomorrow and Saturday to complete. The final exam, and then we are done, you've completed the course. Uh, hope everyone is doing well during the COVID crisis, hopefully your family and loved ones are safe and healthy. And uh, I will see some of you in the fall. And uh, look forward to seeing some of you on campus and congratulations to those graduated.